We're about to open up the meeting. Before I do, I want to welcome everyone here tonight. And I want to thank my gracious old school 28, the school principal, the suy netanetis, Ms. Joan Tomack, the vice principal, and the stands in for the judges. Let's give them a round of applause for hosting the table tonight. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Pursuant to New Jersey statutes and the rules adopted by the Board of Education, notice of this meeting was sent to the rural community newspapers, The Star-Ledger and Cable Mission of Elizabeth on Monday, September 15, 2014. In addition, this notice is posted on the bulletin board in the lobby of 500 Broad Street. Pursuant to this act, a copy has been filed with the City Clerk of Elizabeth. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers on the September 18, 2014 meeting of the Elizabeth Board of Education. We are here to govern, provide management oversight, and make policy for the district. The superintendent manages the district. This is a meeting of the board in public, not a meeting of the public. This meeting is being recorded and will become part of the Elizabeth Board of Education permanent record. In order that the recording will adequately reflect the proceedings, please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also ask that you sign as a sound manure with electronic devices. Since it is legally mandated that these proceedings be actively recorded, I may have to ask for order periodically should norings begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you have taken time out this evening to join us, and thank you for your interest in the Elizabeth Public Schools. There will be a public portion for citizens to address the board this evening. Participants in the public portion must sign in one hour prior to the hour past start of the meeting so that they have an opportunity to speak. The signing sheet states the name, the address, the telephone number, and the reason that the person wants to comment, whether it is in the judge item or a general education comment. Mr. Kennedy, would you please take the vote?
Batelis.
Here.
Castillo.
Here.
Paharda.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Naron.
Here.
Barrer.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Trujillo.
Here.
Montero.
Here.
I'm going to ask that we all please stand. Every man standing has to go through the application, pledge allegiance, or pledge of ethics. Now, we have our second reading, from Golden, through the application. Let us now hit some prayer. Oh God, heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, oh God, that you've given us. Oh God, we pray your Holy Spirit be upon us as we make decisions tonight. We thank you for a good school year, and we pray your blessings upon us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Thank you. About to present our pledge of allegiance is our eighth grade student, Elizabeth Teres. Brittany Shearman-Williams, also an eighth grade student, here at the Warren Pablo Duarte Jose Julia Martí School 128.
I come to this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the religion of the Lord.
Thank you. About to present our Star-Spangled Banner, will be the host, uh, school 28 chorus. by our seventh and eighth grade students, Gabriela Duran and Juliette George, here also from school 28.
As the members of Elizabeth Public Schools professional learning community, I will treat people as I wish to treat them. To do that, I pledge to understand that the school community is special place, listen respectfully to someone who is speaking by paying close attention and not insulting, speak in a calm voice and use proper language, dress appropriately for teaching and learning, inspire the best in myself and others by celebrating successes and achievements, care about others by nurturing hands and kindness, feel like a fond learner by taking every opportunity to learn from others.
Thank you. A single more round of applause. Okay, let's try it again. To present our Star-Spangled Banner, will be our school 28 chorus. How the George Washington Academy led by Mrs. Elizabeth Teres. Our next presentation will be "What I Am," by Will I Am, will be presented by the Jerome Dunn Academy, school number nine. About to present our Star-Spangled Banner, will be our school 28 chorus. How the George Washington Academy led by Mrs. Elizabeth Teres. Our next presentation will be "What I Am," by Will I Am, will be presented by the Jerome Dunn Academy, school number nine. Now, we get to our favorite part of the evening. We have several performances here tonight. Uh, our first performance is going to be a reading. "I Have a White Rose to Ten" by a Jose Martí student, Gary Wardring Jr., he's a Central Creek student here, he's going to be doing the English version. And we have Melody Garcia-Vargas, an eighth grade student, will be doing the Spanish version.
I have a white rose to tend in July as in January. I gave it to the trooper who offers his frank hands. And for the cruel one whose blows break the heart by which I live, this one are going to be white-gave. For him too I have a white rose.
Cultivo la rosa blanca de Jose Julia Martí. Cultivo la rosa blanca en julio como en enero para el amigo sincero que me da su mano franca y para el cruel que me arranca. El corazón con que vivo, caro lindo, orugas cultivo, cultivo la rosa blanca. Gracias.
To Gary and Melody, if you can let us give a round of applause. Now, joining us this evening for two other performances, and we are so grateful for their attendance here tonight, and so excited at the same time, we have with us our friends from down, down the street, I guess, school number one, and we have school number nine. From school number one, we have our principal, Ms. Anthony Zioferro, Mr. Vice Principal, Mr. Frank Wansaw, and Vice Principal, Marlene Hesakal, as you never round of applause. And from the school number nine, Jerome Dunn Academy, we have our principal, Ms. Alyssa Torres. Our vice principal, Ms. Annis Doctor, mine Mosley. And our vice principal, Ms. Christine Nasserly. Thank you all so much for being here. About to present "America the Beautiful," music by Samuel A. Ward, and words by Catherine Lee Bates, from the George Washington Academy, number one, it will be created four through eight, presenting "America the Beautiful." Thank you all so much for being here. About to present "America the Beautiful," music by Samuel A. Ward, and words by Catherine Lee Bates, from the George Washington Academy, number one, it will be created four through eight, presenting "America the Beautiful." Now, we get to our favorite part of the evening. We have several performances here tonight. Uh, our first performance is going to be a reading. "I Have a White Rose to Ten" by a Jose Martí student, Gary Wardring Jr., he's a Central Creek student here, he's going to be doing the English version. And we have Melody Garcia-Vargas, an eighth grade student, will be doing the Spanish version.
I have a white rose to tend in July as in January. I gave it to the trooper who offers his frank hands. And for the cruel one whose blows break the heart by which I live, this one are going to be white-gave. For him too I have a white rose.
Cultivo la rosa blanca de Jose Julia Martí. Cultivo la rosa blanca en julio como en enero para el amigo sincero que me da su mano franca y para el cruel que me arranca. El corazón con que vivo, caro lindo, orugas cultivo, cultivo la rosa blanca. Gracias.
To Gary and Melody, if you can let us give a round of applause. Now, joining us this evening for two other performances, and we are so grateful for their attendance here tonight, and so excited at the same time, we have with us our friends from down, down the street, I guess, school number one, and we have school number nine. From school number one, we have our, we have our principal, Ms. Anthony Zioferro, Mr. Vice Principal, Mr. Frank Wansaw, and Vice Principal, Marlene Hesakal, as you never round of applause. And from the school number nine, Jerome Dunn Academy, we have our principal, Ms. Alyssa Torres. Our vice principal, our principal, Ms. Annis Doctor, mine Mosley. And our vice principal, Ms. Christine Nasserly. Thank you all so much for being here. About to present "America the Beautiful," music by Samuel A. Ward, and words by Catherine Lee Bates, from the George Washington Academy, number one, it will be created four through eight, presenting "America the Beautiful." Our next presentation will be "What I Am," by Will I Am, will be presented by the Jerome Dunn Academy, school number nine.
I'm just standing around without being in front of you.
You go right to the front, right beyond this. Yeah. Yep.
What I am is what save me, and I'll make something to help me, and I will always be the best me that I can be. There's only one me I admit, have a dream I'll follow it, it's up to me to try. Oh, I'm gonna keep my head up high, keep on reaching high, never gonna quit, I'll be getting stronger, and nothing's gonna bring me down, nothing's gonna stop I go, because I know I'll be getting stronger. And what I am is tough, and what I am is beautiful, and what I am is smart, and what I am is brave, and what I am is helpful, and what I am is special, there's nothing I can't achieve, 'cause in myself I believe in. Oh, I'm gonna keep my head up high, keep on reaching high, never gonna quit, I'll be getting stronger, and nothing's gonna bring me down, nothing's gonna stop I go, because I know I'll be getting stronger. And what I am is super, and what I am is proud, and what I am is friendly, and what I am is happy, and what you are is magical, and what you are is special, there's nothing I can't achieve, 'cause in myself I believe in. Oh, I'm gonna keep my head up high, keep on reaching high, never gonna quit, I'll be getting stronger, and nothing's gonna bring me down, nothing's gonna stop I go, oh, oh yeah, I'll be getting stronger.
Let's give the students and Mr. Cole Pepe another round of applause up there. Now, let's keep this all in mind, that school just opened a week ago. Is that terrific or what? Now, with that note, we have a special request that we, the board decided to entertain, and I approve. Tonight, having our special guests from school one, here at the George Washington Academy, and school number nine, the Jerome Dunn Academy, it was requested that several of their staff members can present testimonials. And I said, I see, I didn't see why not, and I absolutely supported that idea, and thought it would be wonderful. Here's a testimonials from some of the staff from school one, school nine. So now, excuse me from the Jerome Dunn Academy, Ms. Lizzie Belvin Flowers. And also for the record, Mrs. Flowers has been in the mission for 35 years.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, board of education members. And yes, my name is Lizzie Belvin Flowers, and I would like to share my thoughts about the new initiative, the Jerome Dunn Academy of Mathematics, Technology, and Arts. Yes, like Tony said, I have been employed by the Elizabeth Board of Education for over 35 years, and I have taught at George Washington, school number one, for those 35 years. On my bench, with the new condition for one, and as I was saying, I was assigned to Jerome Dunn Academy. I was honored and thrilled to be, and thrilled to be assigned to the new academy and start a new career. This change brings our students, parents, and teachers. And the change has come in the name of Alyssa Torres, Jerome Dunn Academy principal. Our students yearn for proper guidance to achieve academic success, and the change has come at the right time for our students. In the words of our president, Barack Obama, "Change will not come if we wait for some other person or some other time. We are the ones we've been waiting for. We are the change that we seek. I know that we will continue to inspire our students to achieve excellence with the launch of our new academies. Let's make it happen. Thank you."
And I also want to take this time to recognize this flower. This past Sunday, Elizabeth hosted the African-American Heritage Day Parade, and Mrs. Flowers was recognized as one of the most admirable women we have here at the C. Elizabeth. it was requested that several of their staff members can present testimonials. And I said, I see, I didn't see why not. And I absolutely supported that idea, and thought it would be wonderful. Here's some testimonials from some of the staff from School One, School Nine. So now, excuse me from the Jerome Dunn Academy, Ms. Lizzie Belvin Flowers. And also for the record, Mrs. Flowers has been in the district for thirty-five years.
Good evening. Elizabeth Board of Education members. And yes, my name is Lizzie Belvin Flowers. And I would like to share my thoughts about the new and new initiative, Jerome Dunn Academy of Mathematics, Technology, and the Arts. Yes, like Tony said, I have been employed by the Elizabeth Board of Education for over thirty-five years. And I have taught at George Washington School Number One for those thirty-five years. On my bench. When the new initiative was one in the academy, I was assigned to Jerome Dunn Academy. I was honored and thrilled to be, and thrilled to be assigned to the new academy and start a new career in the new academy. Students, parents, and teachers. And the change has come in the name of Elizabeth Flores, Jerome Dunn Academy Principal. Our students yearn for proper guidance to achieve academic success. And the change has come at the right time for our students. In the words of our president, Barack Obama, "Change will not come if we wait for some other person or some other time." We are the ones we've been waiting for. We are the change that we seek. I know that we will continue to inspire our students to achieve excellence with the launch of our new academies. Let's make it happen. Thank you.
And I also want to thank this time for recognizing this flower. This past Sunday, Elizabeth hosted the African-American Heritage Day Parade, and Mrs. Flowers was recognized as one of the most admirable women we have here in the city of Elizabeth. All well deserved. Also to speak on behalf of School Number Nine, and I had such pleasure meeting Jane Tierney last week when I visited School Nine as they hosted the memorial for the September eleventh. And it was a very touching service. And I want to thank Mrs. Flores and her staff and all the children that day. It was very moving. And I'm glad that they acquired me. And during so long I toured the school, I met Mrs. Tierney. And I was taken back by her spirit, her love, passion for teaching. And I ask that Mrs. Flores and Mrs. Tierney would be willing to speak here today. So Mrs. Tierney, twenty-seven years in the district. Thank you so much for being here.
My name is Jane Tierney. And I've been a teacher at George Washington School Number One for twenty-six years. Right now, experiencing all the changes, the movements, the change. In two thousand nine, I had the honor of being Teacher of the Year. Now, in my twenty-seven year in the district, I am a second grade teacher at the Jerome Dunn Academy, School of Mathematics, Technology, and the Arts, Number Nine. I'd like to share a little story with you. On the first day of school, one of my dear second graders, my second grade scholar, he said to me, and anyone who listened, "I'm not going to wear that green shirt." Well, on the next day, he wore the green shirt. And by the end of the week, he repeatedly shared how he loves School Number Nine and never once believed that Jerome Dunn Academy. It's different. I can see the way the learning culture has changed. The teachers are inspired. The students are not just students. They are scholars. The leadership is empowering. This year seems magical. There's such a positive vibe at Jerome Dunn Academy. I am experiencing such positive interactions with my colleagues, my administrators, and my scholars. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Tierney. To me, it's the world. Much appreciated. Now, also with this year tonight is the George Washington Academy team. And so their team members would like to come up and speak. And I know Mrs. Ziorro, Solanzola, and Miss Hasagawa have been doing a remarkable job in the short time that they've been there. And we're so excited about this energy and spirit coming out of School One and now School Nine. It's just incredible. Having visited myself, or just, we're gonna have to go, it's remarkable. And we're awesome. So now, come up and speak. Staff member from the George Washington Academy, we have Joshua Solomon, who's in the district for four years. Solomon.
So as you said, I've been in the district for four years. All four years been spent at George Washington Academy. And when I asked him to come up and speak about my experiences here, because the experience changed this year. I felt that there's been so much positive, it was hard to come up with enough to keep, I guess, short enough for tonight. So I really had to cut it down. But at George Washington Academy, there's really a lot of real teaching and learning taking place. Our students, if you look around, we're all engaged. They're asking questions everywhere you turn. There's a really positive feeling running through our building. Staff members, we're all on board with the new, the restructure of school. Our students are excited about what's to come in this school year. And quite frankly, my worries have personally been drowned. I'm no longer worried, rather I'm filled with excitement. And I'm extremely excited about the possibility that I can actually accomplish so much in this school year and in many years to come. We're all excited about the new technology focus that we have at School One. And I'm even more excited to get up and running in my classroom. I'm excited to have a principal who has a positive, long-term vision for our school. Most importantly, I am excited to be a part of George Washington Academy. In my years of teaching at School Number One, I've always entered the school year with new plans and implementing new forward-thinking teaching styles and methods. This year, I have the same visions, the same aspirations of creating a better, forward-thinking classroom. This year, I believe I've set out to do everything that I want to do. That's the duty of the George Washington Academy. We have an environment, team, support, and technology that we need in order to achieve greatness. Teaching at School Number One Academy is getting more fun and more exciting every single day. It's a great joy and excitement and enthusiasm that I watched George Washington School disappear and reappear as the George Washington Academy. All the teachers and administration throughout Elizabeth, I want you guys to make sure you keep your eyes open. Because we're gonna be a great school. We plan on making our mark. We plan on showing everybody how great we really can be. We plan on showing you our best and achieving at the highest level. And I am beyond excited and beyond confident at what we at School Number One Academy are going to achieve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Solomon. Now, just to be open to George Washington Academy, we have Allison Mendick, who's been in the district thirteen years. Let's give her a round of applause.
Good evening. I'm Allison Mendick, a second grade teacher in George Washington Academy. This is my thirteenth year of teaching in School One. So far, it has also been my best year of teaching at School One. I commend the administration for implementing many changes that has positively affected our students this year. First, the tone was set this year by Dr. Pedro Aguero. Dr. Aguero shared his philosophy about teaching, which is that we need to teach each and every student as an individual and assess each child's particular needs. We then need to help the student and the student's family satisfy those needs in order for them to grow academically. This year, administration and staff have adopted this approach. Administration implemented school-wide character education, which will give our students tips not only to succeed in school, but in the world. We have also focused on including the parents more. For example, on the first day of school, Mr. Ziorro and Dr. Solanzola greeted parents and children outside of school, provided them with their child's classroom number, and encouraged parents to walk their children to their classrooms and meet the teachers. This eliminated first-day confusions outside of the school and allowed the parents to have a meaningful conversation with the teacher and see where their children will be spending their day. Simple changes such as this one, which have been made possible due to the reduction size of the school, have led to greater organization and more collaboration amongst all teachers, staff, and administration. The teachers feel the support of the administrators, reading and math coaches, and the Board of Education. We appreciate that in the first week of school, we were visited by the superintendent, assistant superintendent, supervisor of language arts, director of curriculum, and many others. George Washington Academy is filled with positive energy from administration through the teachers and on to the students. There is pride in being part of the George Washington Academy.
Thank you, Ms. Mendick. And I want to thank each and every one of you who came out here tonight, and particularly those who spoke those testimonials. It certainly means the world to us and more so to the students, the parents of those who attend these schools. They said it couldn't be done, and it's being done. The energy, the passion, the dedication, the determination is there. I've seen it firsthand. It's incredible. And it was only in the first week of school. So the possibilities are endless. And from the entire Board of Education, we thank you. From the bottom of our hearts, what you're doing is remarkable. I'm sure we're gonna be reading about you, hearing about you. And this is gonna be just a transformation. And I know there are so many other administrators here in this room tonight. I wouldn't be calling them all out by names tonight, because I know I'm certain to miss a few. But I want to thank each and every one of you. And I see Dennis Arlo back there, who leads our superband, our three-time national champion. In the back is Arlo. Thank you. Keep up the good work. We have so many here today. We have Kathy DeGroffio, Anthony Ziorro, Ollie Hasagawa, Holly Mendez, Solanzola, Jennifer Cantell, Christine Brito, Amos Lofer, Robert DeCiro, Lawrence Blumberg, Melissa Torres, Christine Castleley, Gladys Castellano, Melissa Kooling, Kathy Dallas, Oscar Presto, Nicholas Comas, Perez Sully Sanchez, Sandra Baristo, Maria Lavador, Finia Armin Carolina, Phil Gomez, Howard Peddwell, Suzy Nenness, Nancy Georgette, Joan Tomac, John Melody, Cherry Cole, Christopher Van Lee, Tahima Day, Michael Conings, Tom D'Onno, Mel Mendick, Sandra Hart, Michael Agito. And we have Eunice, Eunice Consuelo, Tracy Clasie, Andy Gale, Dennis Arlo, Michael Burgh, Valerie Gunn, Joe Bastello, Suzy Hernandez, Joe Pavel, Mike Rijo, Alberto Marcel, Kazal Kazada, Ismael Estrada. Not just, receiving humor. Not just receiving humor, always do that to this thing. School twenty-six. Of course, the first lot of all. Who else did I miss in the room? I know I missed someone. Who else did I miss? Did I miss anyone? I apologize if I did. Once again, that's remarkable how many of you came out here tonight. That's passion and that's dedication. How many of you were showing hands, attended that rally we had on that Friday? How many of you were there? How many of you thought that was just outstanding? Round of applause. That was terrific. It was just so much energy and so much spirit in everyone. I want to thank everyone who participated in that day to bring us back into the opening of the school here. So I want to thank you all for being out here tonight. The principals, thank you for doing this. Miss Comas, twenty. I know you have a lot of passion and energy here at this school. We look forward one day to stopping by there and hosting this meeting there. Now, at this time, we have from Groundwork Elizabeth, we have Mr. Jonathan Phillips and Chris Rodriguez. This organization here in Elizabeth doing many wonderful things that we partner up with. And we'd like to, Mr. Jonathan Phillips asks if he can come up and say a few words. Let's get him around the crowd.
Board of Education, superintendent, school staff, parents, and friends. My name's John Phillips, Groundwork Elizabeth. And we've been here in the city of Elizabeth working as a nonprofit independently since two thousand three. I know quite a few. Hello. Those of you who don't know, hello. We were founded, again, in two thousand three, and we've worked with the school system since two thousand six, especially in the high schools with our green team. And it's a great relationship. We're looking to continue that. But I'm here to speak about something else today. We were actually, we applied for, and we have been awarded a U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development federal grant from an organization called Together North Jersey. And that's administered through the Blaisdine School at Rutgers University for the purpose of working to promote community solutions toward regions' challenges. And the key test of this grant is to work with community and schools to identify safe routes to schools. I understand this is very timely. Folks, right now, it's time for the entire community. Safe routes to schools in Groundwork are working with stakeholders and partners in a community on a walkability study scheduled for Friday, October seventeenth, to be held at the Elizabeth Housing Authority Community Center, two fifty-two, Second Street, here at Eport, the Eport District. And we're asking, I understand this is a resolution that's going to be presented. We're asking for the Elizabeth Public Schools' participation, specifically in this neighborhood, so we can together make choices which will lead to safer pedestrian travel, greater physical activity going to and from school. There are many challenges in our neighborhood here at Eport. And we must work together as a community to identify and solve them. We want to engage students and parents from the following schools here at Elizabeth for: Number One, Number Nine, Number Thirteen, Number Twenty, and Number Twenty-Eight. So we're hopeful you can work with this and adopt this resolution. And following me right now is somebody from Safe Routes to Schools in the state of New Jersey. Thank you.
Hi, how's everyone doing? My name is Chris Rodriguez. I'll just say this here. My name is Chris Rodriguez. And like John was introducing, I work on Safe Routes to Schools from my organization, a nonprofit called Medaling. We work in a lot of counties in New Jersey. We work in hundreds of schools. And I'm the coordinator for union counties. So that's why I'm here, working with John and working with the school administration. And what we're here to do is, just like John said, to make walking and biking not just a more viable option, because we know a lot of children walk and bike here already in Elizabeth. We want to make sure that they have as safe a passage to school that they can possibly have. So that's the reason that we're here. And I thank, you know, the board, the administrators, and the parents for giving us the time, their time, their interest to speak to you guys about this. So again, with the resolution, I hope that, you know, that is passed and that we're able to work with you on this wonderful project. We have a lot of things planned, the walkability audit. We have a lot of things scheduled. So there's a lot of things here to save routes to school. And I really hope to work with you all in the future. So thank you again for your time. Everybody have a great day.
Thank you so much for being here today. Thank you for being able to be here and represent the city of Elizabeth. Thank you.
Mr. President, may I say something?
This is true. I'll try to be brief. I walked here tonight. So I want to thank you for bringing the meeting to the Elizabeth Board. I don't get often to walk the meeting. I never thought that this day would come. I was elected in two thousand and seven for the first time. And this school wasn't built yet. And there's a lot of need in this neighborhood. And the community is very loving and accepts change and wants to do good things. We're not any different than any other community. We want the best for our children. And the fact that now we have addressed probably the biggest problem that faced education in the Elizabeth Board was School One. The size, the mere size of the school. I know I had many conversations with the previous superintendent about the need to address School One. And although there were other priorities and the time wasn't right, Ms. Flowers said the time is right now. And we finally made it. And I am so happy to see that we are heading in the right direction and that now we have two great new academies, great leadership, great staff, and the incredible amount of energy that it's going to take to achieve excellence in those schools. I can see it, I feel the buzz in the air as I walk and I talk to the parents and I ask some questions about what's planned ahead for these academies. And they're excited. I just feel it. And I'm excited. I'm really happy that finally the day has come. I didn't think we would get here. Because it's just so hard sometimes. You know, it's such a big district with so many needs. And I look at some of the faces of the educators that I've seen that I recognize. And I know you all love what you do and you do it with so much passion. And it's going to, it's gonna show. It's going to show the end result. I'm really excited for you guys. Have a great school year. Thank you for choosing. I know, you know... I know, you know, people come to you all the time. And I don't want to be at this school. I want to be at that school. I haven't heard that from school one or school nine. That means they want to be there.
Now we move into the recognitions of the night for the students as stars of excellence. First one, the Thomas Jefferson Arts Academy students. We present it by Commissioner Mr. Samuel Yara. Good evening, everyone. Is it on? Okay, good. Good evening, everyone. Once again, welcome back to school this year for the 2014-2015 year. It is my honor to make this first presentation for the students as stars of excellence, Thomas Jefferson Arts Academy students. Let's give them a big round of applause. And here's the word for those students. Tonight, we have two Thomas Jefferson Arts Academy students who earned gold medals at the Afro-Academic Cultural, Technological, and Scientific Olympics of New Jersey. ACTSO, a program by the NAACP, which is offered, which is often referred to as the Olympic of the mind, Olympics of the mind, seeks to promote positive self-esteem, positive interaction between our youth and adult professional community. Positive academic and artistic excellence and high academic and cultural achievements. Students who participate in ACTSO compete with other students locally in up to three to 26 categories, which includes sciences, humanities, performing arts, visual arts, and business. Jefferson Arts Academy was one of only three New Jersey high schools. I repeat, one of only three New Jersey high schools. Let's give it up for that. Two gold medal recipients. Please join me in congratulating our two gold medal recipients. James Morris, a 10th grade student, received a gold medal for his instrumental classical performance. James Morris is here. And Azan Corley, an 11th grade student, who received a gold medal in playwright, in a playwright practice. Do not ignore Azan. Our next presentation will be by Commissioner Carlos Fajillo.
Yeah, we can't get this microphone situation right. I'm not going to use it. It's loud enough that you can hear it. Next, we have Jefferson Arts Academy students who were selected for the Papermill Playhouse Broadway Show Choir. The Papermill Playhouse Broadway Show Choir is an audition-based exhibition show choir that stems from Papermill Playhouse's award-winning arts, education, and outreach programs. The choir consists of 40 to 50 singers, dancers between the ages of 16 and 22. Students selected to be a part of this talented group have the opportunity to fine-tune their craft with free intensive instruction that includes private voice training. The Papermill Playhouse Broadway Show Choir acts as an ambassador to Papermill Playhouse with an array of performances, opportunities throughout the community and beyond. Over the last two seasons, the choir has reached more than 100,000 people with performances at major venues throughout the state. Please join me in congratulating these three students for being selected to the Papermill Playhouse Broadway Choir. 11th grade student, Gabby Gomez. 12th grade student, Yashi Blain. Class of 2014 graduate, Eliah Atwood. Another round of applause.
Our next presentation will be by Commissioner Francisco Casales.
Thank you. Our next student to be recognized this evening is the only student from New Jersey to be awarded at John S. Martinez Leadership Scholarship. The John S. Martinez Leadership Scholarship Program is specifically designed to help Hispanic high school students achieve educational success. This program has been implemented within the 38 states and territories that have Hispanic state legislators. The $3,000 scholarship award was presented to a total of 11 Hispanic public high school students throughout America. Please join me in congratulating our 2014 John S. Martinez Leadership Scholarship recipient, 12th grade, Polytechnic Academy student, Alexander Rosales.
Congratulations. Thank you once again. Our next presenter will be Commissioner Karleen Battles.
Good evening, everyone. I'll like to present the 2014 Let's Move Active School National Recognition Initiative. Next, the board has recognized our 17 schools that were among 698 in the United States recognized by Let's Move, which is our initiative by our first lady, Michelle Obama. Active schools as 2014 National Recognition Award winners. Let's Move is a comprehensive initiative launched by our first lady, Michelle Obama, dedicated to solving the problems of obesity within a generation so that children born today will grow up healthier and able to pursue their dreams. To earn a Let's Move Active Schools National Recognition Award, a school must have met significant benchmarks in five areas. One, physical education. Two, physical activity before and after school. Three, physical activity during school. Four, staff involvement. And five, family and community engagement. Elizabeth Public Schools have the most recognized schools in any district in the state. Our 17 schools accounted for nearly 42% of the 41 schools in New Jersey that are recognized. So that's a great comparison. Please join me along with the board in congratulating our 17 Let's Move Active Schools for 2014 National Recognition Award. At my party school, please come up. The Whittsville Scott School, number two. The Whittsville Scott School, number three. The Joseph Scott School, number four. Labor Day Home School, number five. High Lees Academy School, number eight. Best Boring School, number 12. Madison College School, number 16. John Marshall School, number 20. Baker Marla School, number 21. Dr. Orlando Academy School, number 26. Dr. Albert Einstein Academy School, number 29. Non-English Wireless Technology Academy. Common TSG Career Technology Academy. Elizabeth High School. Paul D. Lewis Academy. Hamilton Campus Touring Academy. And lastly, Thomas Johnson Arts Academy. Let's take a moment off our floor.
Our next presenter will be our vice president of our board, Elsie Castillo Ospina.
Good evening, buenas noches. Pleasure of giving this award to one of our favorite schools, Dr. Orlando Trail School, 26. Thank you for being here tonight. This student was accepted to the Juilliard Music and Dancing Program. Thanks. Next, we have Dr. Orlando Trail School Academy student who was accepted into the Music and Dancing Program at the prestigious Juilliard School. The Music and Dancing Program is a study instrument instruction program for highly talented children from backgrounds under, represented in the American Performing Arts. For the past 40 years, MAP has served as a substantial bridge to higher-level decision-making, cultural participation, and personal growth for hundreds of young students. Please join me in congratulating our student accepted into the Juilliard Music and Dancing Program. Eightth grade student, Priyanka Decker, named this, coming directly from the MAP. And I would like to have the teachers come up to him to accept this award.
And our last presentation of this evening will be done by our senior board member, Mr. Rafael Mahalo. Before I call him up, I also want to recognize committed back to the room by Mr. Spada, former board member, Mr. Stefano Colavella. Let's give him a round of applause. Mr. Park.
Thank you, Tony. You mean senior board member or what's the standard?
Let's hear it.
Let's say, okay. I thought you were older than me. Recognition for the successfully opening of George Washington Academy, number one, and Yaron Dunn Academy, school number nine. Last but not least, for our final recognition of the evening, the board would like to recognize the efforts of a member of our operation team. Through his diligence and hard work, students and staff were welcomed to a vibrant school environment and helped achieve a successful opening of the George Washington Academy of Science and Engineering, school number one, and the Yaron Dunn Academy of Mathematics, Technology, and Arts, school number nine. Please join me in congratulating Ken Susa, head of school at George Washington Academy, school number one. Give him a round of applause.
Thank you very much. I've been with the district 29 years. I last said my last seven years.
The last seven years have been at the George Washington School Number One, now the academies. I can't really accept this without acknowledging my team. They put out a tremendous effort. They put it all out. They serve the children of this city. More importantly, Elizabeth Port area, they moved over 9,786 boxes, not count all the furniture downstairs, walked a quarter mile upstairs, back downstairs, quarter mile back up across the street to the annex, back and forth. Tremendous amount of work put out by them. I'm very proud of them. I couldn't have done it without them. So this report really belongs to all of them, not so much myself. Thank you very much, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Once again, thank you. Before I go, for a five-minute recess, I want to ask you of the board members of my college if they have any final comments before we go through a five-minute recess. Any board members would like to say, Mr. Casales?
I would like to, everybody comes to the meeting usually looking for the agenda, the public agenda. Starting next month, the agenda will be available online at 6 o'clock in the district website. We're going to be launching in parallel both the paper copy and the electronic version for two months. That means October, November, and December, basically, there will be no paperwork. It will be available online only. So spread the word out, and then hopefully spread the word out through some emails and the next couple meetings. But just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Mr. Casales. At this time, once again, thank you all for coming out this evening, and we'll take a five-minute recess. Thank you.